It's eight thirty, I'd like to call the meeting to order with the pleasure of the lead. Please stand. Item number three, invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. See, nobody's here, so we'll move on to number four, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections?
No, I don't have any.
One?
No.
All those in favor, second by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. We do have Leanne on the phone this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Consent agenda items. Approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of human services report. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or anything? Nothing, call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, routine business. Approval of the claims.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bourbon Head report. Brian, you want to start?
What I have in my report totally changed with the weather changing. We met Thursday, Friday, Monday morning. Finally got all the contractors to kind of collaborate together. Long story short, in between the bridges is paved. We're going to be looking at paving the north side of the North Bridge tomorrow and finishing up the final lift between Friday and Saturday. We're going to be looking at guardrail early next week and seating or backfill the shoulders and seating next week and then getting our striping done. So we could be looking at getting that, those bridges opened mid to late next week is what we're looking at. So things, things changed a lot. At one time, we were looking at, we didn't feel we'd have the weather to perform that work. And with the weather, mother nature has granted us, we decided collaboratively to move forward. We've been down there hauling out some extra riprap that was placed along the banks so they could do their work. And then today, we're working with PRAM also on hauling out some mucky river, river material. We're stockpiling that over by LG Everest and we stockpiled the riprap south of town here. And Boz is going to finish up their little bit of grading they have to prepare for the asphalt and look at coming in tomorrow to tomorrow and Saturday to wrap up the asphalt. And then, like I said, with the guardrail installation early next week. And then some erosion control items that some, the county is responsible for as, as work progresses out there. Then we'll be out there cleaning up items that are on our list and getting our signing installed and getting that opened. Is there any questions on that? All right, secondly, October 26th, the department switched back to our, our winter hours, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Did that because the snow was flying and, and we were kind of, kind of came to a grinding halt with some of our work, but we still have been doing some things. October 29th, the crew worked on the railroad crossing over on Brookings County one. We had to have a flagger present with the railroad to do that work, try to smooth that crossing out. And we did a fairly decent job there, so we're happy with that. And striping update, waiting with the DOT and the striping contractor to come back with a price reduction on the work that was performed this year. Aside from that, we'll be looking at kind of wrapping things up again this week as we're looking at some cooler temperatures coming and hopefully the snow stays away. But we definitely did have a surprise there with that snowstorm, but we were ready and, and felt we did a pretty good job with, with getting the roads cleared off with, with the weather that was thrown at us.
The striping, you pulled them off and they had some work yet to be done, so they're, did they come back and finish everything up then?
Yes, yes. Though, what the contractor had asked for after we had pulled them off is for us to kind of highlight the center line. So we, we went out there and put some more visible marking tabs. And the work that was performed after they came back, it was good. But it's roughly about five miles on County Road 7 is about the worst. And I had our, our sign tech go out and measure all those areas and that's, that's what we're negotiating on. Not paying for those quantities. Aside from that, yesterday, the patch that we did on County Road 12 was finished up in those areas where we had put that shoulder material. And that got wrapped up yesterday along with that first lift between the two bridges. So with the nice weather, it's nice to be out in a tee shirt again. Any other questions?
Thank you. Marty?
Good morning.
Morning.
Just a few things. If you read the detention center report, Dan even kind of mentioned it this morning too, it's, we're lowering numbers at the jail. But 28 is about what we can handle anymore with, with everything going on and size of the facility and stuff. So the ones that are in jail need, they're the ones that need to be in jail. Had a busy weekend, even though it wasn't technically the same type of hobo day in past, but the statistics was, it was pretty close to the same. So there was still a lot of activity out there, you know, and staff really did a good job. I got to send kudos to our staff. You know, we always remind the other agencies to call before they bring a, bring their prisoner to us because we may change the door on them. And we've had to change the door back and forth a couple of times. And, and the other agencies are really good to work with us and stuff. And we've been, staff has been able to bring them in and, and get them processed and stuff. They were, they, they were busy Saturday night. They got kind of hammered all at once after between 12 and, and 3 a.m., or 3 a.m. on, on Sunday morning. But I had extra staff in and they, and they did a good job. So any questions on those? I thought it'd be interesting to, just to compare to hobo day to a kind of a special hobo day, so anyway. Other than that, the guys have been busy with, it seems like we just had more deer accidents for some reason this year. We always have deer accidents, but it just seems like sometimes there's three or four a shift. And, and we're, we're trying to do more things on our Facebook page to make people aware of, you know, just you got to drive with caution at night, especially at night and dusk and dawn and those types of things when the deer are really moving. Because there's still a lot of corn out there and they're, everybody's scampering to get their corn combined before they get, we get a taste of winter again. The other thing is, is that on voting day, everything went well. I don't want to take any of Jenna's thunder or anything like that, but I, I checked at polling places and, and my staff also stopped and stuff. We only had one incident where a deputy was called to a polling place, but it had nothing to do with politics. It was a mental health issue, so it had nothing to do with any candidate specialty or anything like this. But I got to give kudos to the poll people because there's some things they just take care of. Every once in a while, they get somebody that comes in that has their favorite candidate on a hat or something and they just ask them to leave and they've had no issues or anything. So they, they really do a good, good job. The only other new thing since I've been around is that magistrate court judge has requested that everybody in, in magistrate court wear a mask. And, and the people that are coming in are really good about it. They, they already, most of them have their masks. There's, you know, maybe there's always two or three that don't have one, but I keep some at the security desk and, and we give them, give them a mask, so that, that's going well for that. So other than that, if you have any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Vicky?
Good morning.
Morning.
Been, been busy. I just want to thank Jenna and all her team from the elections. Everything really went well. We were out of there right after 9:30, all the precincts were counted. She will give you all the numbers later in the canvas, but everything just went, went very smooth. And I want to thank Sean. He was up in white at 6 o'clock to make sure all, everything was all going good up there with the connectivity and everything. And he was around to different polling locations throughout the day. Marty was helping check in that night and along with what he said, his staff was out checking. And we had some questions before the election started and Dan was great. We had his opinion on a few things we had questions with. So it, it does take a village to get this done. It's not just a few people and all the election people. It was a lot of calling, not a lot of, of problems, but a lot of calling from all the, what the state sent out, all of those elect, or the, or absentee requests that they sent out. And, you know, anybody that got the ballots, they, and they decided they didn't want to vote and go to the polls. Every one of those workers had to call in to make sure the ballot didn't come and we had to give them a code. So there was a lot of phone calls during the day because a lot of them went into the polls to vote, which was fine, but it was just more work for the, for the poll workers. And so thanks to all them. And the absentees, those all went smooth. We ended up with, how many workers was there up for absentees?
We ended up, we started with eight boards and then at about 12:30 realized that if we wanted to get out at a decent time, we probably should add a couple more groups. So we added two more boards. So we called from my master list. We called the next Democrats and Republicans and scrounged up a few more boards and they were so good. So thank you to those six individuals that, you know, we, we called them and they, they were happy. They said, yes, we will be right there. So they came, we quickly did that. So yeah, we added six more people.
Yeah, so 30 people total that were up here working, plus all the election people. I don't know if you have a total of, of how many workers that day, but it was, it's just amazing how much work it is, but everything went good. So a special thank you to all of the people that helped with that. And also, we finished our tax season and we were up with taxes. I know we kind of wondered with COVID and everything, if our tax dollars would come in like normal. And we were up 900,000 compared to what we were last year. And I know some of it's tax increase, but still, we are ahead of what we were last year at this time. And the same thing with motor V over the months. We've had an increase from what it was last year all along. So that has been, been good. And other than that, we do have, there is a new person hired to fill Lori's position when she moves up to finance officer. And she will be starting November 16th. So everything is moving forward and we should be good to go, unless anybody has any questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You know, Vicky, since this is your last election, which I'm sorry to say, I have a question for you because I think there will be some conversation statewide on whether or not there need to be any changes in our election laws. Is there anything that you think from your experience that needs, could be cleaned up that could make the process smoother, or do you think we've got it down?
I think a great legislation would be anybody that comes in to vote early in the office or, you know, out in our hallway. If we didn't have to use those envelopes, if every, when they voted, they could go directly into a ballot box and we could do away with the envelopes. Anything that has to be mailed in, they would still have to use the envelopes and we'd compare signatures. But when they come in early to vote, we look at their ID, we see them, so we know that that is who's voting. If we could get away from those envelopes, that would save a lot of time, money, everything. Because I don't know that this is going away, the increase in early voting. So that would be what I would hope would happen.
That's great. Any other suggestions?
Not really. We, we've talked in our office, we, after every election, we just kind of, you know, have a brainstorming and we've came up with different ideas, what we can do to make it run smoother. And we have those ideas, but as far as legislation wise or anything, we really, at this point, that's the only thing I can think of.
Well, you and Jenna and your office are to be congratulated on how smooth everything ran for Brookings County. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, Vicky, what was the total number of votes cast in Brookings County?
14,374, is that correct?
Yeah, I can give you those numbers at Canvas.
She will have all those numbers with the Canvas.
Okay, and then the percent of the turnout?
76%.
It was 75%.
75.9 or whatever, yeah.
Probably people watching that want to know those numbers, yeah.
Yeah, and
Yep, we'll go over that during the Canvas.
Yeah, she's got all the numbers with her, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob?
Good morning. Quick update from the equalization office. All of our five certified appraisers have been out in the field for the past month. We've, we're just getting wrapped up with our building permits. We had 1,550 parcels that were involved in that process. So it's a big undertaking. The weather didn't cooperate for a little bit, now it is again, so we're, we're kind of lucky that happened. And then yesterday, I'm done with my building permit portion, so I started the sales analysis and I did a quick run of all the sales that will be involved in comparing neighborhoods and making adjustments. We had 710 sales this year. In comparison to last year, we had 720, so we're right on track for what we had a year ago too. That's it, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard?
We haven't, nothing really. December monthly meeting, couple items come up, up on there, so that's all that I have for right now.
Any questions? Okay, we move on to scheduled agenda items, regular business. Action approved resolution number 20-62, a resolution to rescind the burn ban enacted October 15th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any input, Marty or? Richard, anything from Bob?
Yeah, no comment, whatever the, the fire chief and the sheriff would go along with that recommendation.
Okay.
Larry, I have a comment if I might.
Sure.
That resolution needs to be, and I don't know if we have to do an amendment or not, but it'd be nice, because Mike's gone for a while, if we can take, have it reprinted with your name on it and you sign it so it can get done right away.
Okay, noted. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action approve resolution number 20-63, a resolution authorizing the removal of five non-sufficient funds checks dating back to 2015 from the treasurer's record. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I was just curious if either Vicky or Dan could tell us, were there any prosecutions on any of those checks?
Who would like to, Vicky or Dan?
There were a few, without going into the specific names. We had initiated prosecutions on, I think it was two of the maybe five or six names. The other names that were listed on that, they, letters had been sent up to the state's attorney's office before I took office. And prosecutions were not initiated on those checks. And Vicky has? Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to be sure that we have a process in place. This is the first time I remember seeing a list on bad check charges that we're going to get rid of off of our list. I, I wanted to be sure we've got a process in place between the finance office and the state's attorney's office so that you're getting sufficient notice because of the short statute of limitations on those charges.
Yeah, I mean, the state's attorney's office got notice, but the previous state's attorneys didn't file charges on them. So I, the process is in place. It was just a decision that had been made by prior SAs not to file charges.
And just to give you a kind of a background, when they come to audit us, they do not like to see these old ones. And we have taken them off the books, I believe, twice since I've been here in 20 years. And I'm just trying to clean it up so when I'm gone, they can start fresh. And one thing we do do a little bit different than we did back in 2015 and 16, anything that is motor V related, we send them over to the sheriff's office as a distress warrant and they go out and either take the license plates off or they collect the money. And that processes went well. These were back when everything went to the state's attorney's office, so we have updated what the policies are. If it's tax related, you know, property taxes, we reinstate the property taxes. If it's some miscellaneous, then they would still go through the state's attorney's office. But we have updated how we do handle those now and really, they've been going very good. We can send out certified letters, try to get ahold of these people. We take it over to the sheriff's office and we usually have the money back within a day or two. So it's, it's went well.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number C, action approve abatement number 20-32, an abatement application made by Dale Patrick for parcel number 37525-0000-004-00 in the amount of $531.57. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Vicky?
This is a house over in White that was torn down on August 1st of 2019. Our office was not notified until February of 2020 when, when taxes were going to be paid. And in a perfect world, we'd like to be notified of things being torn down or built at the time that it happens. But this person was able to provide some proof as to the date of demolition, so we were able to recommend approval on this abatement.
And also, the city of White did approve this. It had to go to White first. They did approve that on Tuesday night.
Angie?
Out of curiosity, are people pulling demolition permits for these as a part of a building permit process that would normally be filed with you or is it not?
That only happens within the city of Brookings.
Gotcha, okay.
Any other entity does not require a demolition permit, so it's kind of on the homeowner to notify us in a timely fashion.
Is that something that we should be looking at? How, how, if you're out in the county and we're not doing demolition permits, how, how do we ensure that the utilities are properly shut off, things are capped that need to be capped, that there's not a, I want to say common nuisance, but I mean more serious than that when you're looking at the utility stuff?
I guess I really don't have an answer to that, other than I'm sure these local entities are more than likely aware that these processes are happening and getting utilities shut off in a timely fashion. But just kind of the loose ends that, that happen are notifying us to take it off the tax rolls.
And I guess I'm asking more about the ones that are out in the county as opposed to the ones that are in a municipality.
That might be a Richard question.
Yeah.
If they're out in the county removing a building, they, the contractor or the landowner, more than likely would have electricity removed from the, from the property. If there's propane there, they would disconnect the propane tank. It's up to the landowner to ensure that is all done. We do not issue demolition permits. We do not issue anything for inspections for utilities, gas lines, telephone. That's all up to the landowner.
And I guess that's the question, Richard, is is there a need for or a benefit to having a requirement for a demolition permit so that we're sure that those safety issues are resolved? And again, I'm not talking about in municipalities, I'm talking about out in the county.
I would say no, because if it's up to the landowner and they don't get it off of their taxes, they'll see you next time soon, they'll report that. I've been here 15 years, there's been no incidents where it's been an explosion or electrician, electrocution or anything from demolishing those buildings, so.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Pierce? Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number D, action approve agreement number twenty dash fifty-seven, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Preliminary Engineering State Administration for Structure Number O-six-dash-two-two-zero-dash-eight-nine, project Brookings eight-zero-zero-six, parentheses zero-zero-two-one-dash-one, PCN number O-eight-AK. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Brian, you have background?
Yeah, these were the three structures that we were awarded in August, and these are the agreements for those structures.
Okay, where, where would this one be located?
I believe this one is up, um, uh, uh, over by Elkin on this one. The other two, uh, the three-O-one and the three-O-six-one-ten are located by the power plant.
Okay. Any quite other questions? Call the roll, please.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action approve agreement number twenty dash fifty-eight, state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Preliminary Engineering State Administration for Structure Number O-six, three-O-one-one-ten, project Brookings eight-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-two-one-dash-two, PCN number O-eight-A-L. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, action approve agreement number twenty dash fifty-nine, state of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Preliminary Engineering State Administration for Structure Number O-six, three-O-six-one-ten, project Brookings eight-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-two-one-dash-three, PCN number O-eight-A-M. Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G, action approve agreement number twenty dash sixty, an agreement between Brookings County, the city of Brookings, and Johnson Feeds Incorporated for supplying road salt. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, any comments?
Just, uh, following what we've done in the past, I, I know this year got a little late, um, but reviewing that and the review of what we've used in the past, it looks like, uh, the material that we're allocated for the five hundred tons would be plenty.
Any other question? Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, action approve agreement number twenty dash sixty-one, an application for occupants of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Afton Township. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
One of the comments that I would like to make on this is, uh, talking with several landowners, um, after the, the power company started to install this, there was some, uh, right-of-way, uh, width disagreements. Our records are poor at best, as far as our, our right-of-way widths. I think there was a little confusion as far as, uh, the typical right-of-way width. Uh, so I do want to point that out. You know, some roads are, are eighty-foot right-of-ways, some roads are a hundred-foot right-of-ways, or some roads may have a combination of both. It depends on what era they were constructed in. So talking with the, uh, power company and talking with the landowners, um, if you guys would happen to hear about this, uh, that is one of the, the things that I think we need to get ironed out, is, is our right-of-way widths. And I, I know I brought it up in the past, uh, working with the Equalization Office, and I, I, I think that we need to focus on getting something put together, uh, for our records. Just so if we do get questions in, in these instances, uh, we'd have an answer. It's probably not going to be something that comes about overnight, but it is something that I think that we need to collaboratively work together on, is to get those ironed out.
We had the same issue before. If you didn't have a, uh, bridge project or a road project down that typical section in the last thirty, forty years, it was never recorded.
Right.
Um, and, and you would find them when you did your projects.
So that, uh, that is one of the thing, uh, that these two permits with, or the one permit with Sioux Valley is the question on our right-of-way widths. But I think as far as these two miles go, I think we've got a pretty good agreement between the landowner and the, and the power company and ourselves, so.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item I, action approve agreement number twenty dash sixty-two, an application for occupants of right-of-way county highway made by Jesse Hall in Laketon Township. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Background here?
Yeah, they're gonna be do, this is up by Lake Ponce, that they're gonna be doing some, some tiling, um, crossing one of our roads, uh, with the tile pipe. And talking with the, the tile installer, they're gonna be pretty much outside the right-of-way, but the tile line will run underneath of our right-of-way. So they won't be, you know, technically doing any excavation within the right-of-way, but the pipe will cross underneath of our, our road.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J, action approve agreement number twenty dash sixty-three, an application for occupants of right-of-way county highway made by Sioux Valley Energy in Madera Township.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Uh, this is just, uh, replacing one box and retiring three others, or just kind of, they're cleaning up a little bit of the, their box.
Have a motion and a second. All those approve, or approve, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. Item K, action approve agreement number twenty dash sixty-four, an application for occupants of right-of-way county highway made by Dale Josephson in Windsor Township.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any background here?
Typical, same, same thing, uh, uh, excavation will take, uh, place outside of our right-of-way, but it'll cross underneath of our road.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item L, action approve a request to fill vacancy for an equipment operator in the highway department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any background here, Brian?
Uh, we had an employee that, uh, just decided one day he wasn't going to show up for work, and I have not heard from him since. It kind of happened right as the snow started flying. It, it didn't necessarily put us into a pinch, um, right now that we have enough, uh, operators, uh, or employees to operate, uh, our equipment. But if we would come down with, uh, you know, somebody needing to be gone, um, that would put us short, so.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that I do want to point out, um, we're still currently working on getting, uh, three of our positions to get CDLs, so that, that still's kind of pushing us back. So, uh, getting this open, I, I know that we've been working on getting these CDLs for about two months. Uh, they, they just can't even, you know, a month out to get an appointment. So the sooner that we can get this open, uh, the sooner we can try to get, you know, somebody in with a, a CDL is what we're hoping, uh, so we don't have to go through that process. It's, right now, we're kind of in a pinch. Uh, we're trying to get these guys pushed through to get their testing done, uh, in the, in, with the DMV, and then they also have to do the driving portions. I mean, uh, two weeks between when you take the test to when you can drive, uh, they have to have a minimum of fourteen days, uh, and they do that to try to get the, the operator some experience. So, but before they can get their full-fledged CDL, it's, you know, we're looking at dang near a two-month process to get this done. So that's my only comment.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item M, motion to approve a request for funding for the Christmas Kids and Cops program. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Um.
What was the dollar amount on the motion?
That's my question, what dollar amount, it would.
What they request.
Um, they didn't request a specific amount in the past. For the past handful of years, the commission has done five hundred dollars, and there is money in the public relations line for that, if that's what you choose to do.
Five hundred dollars, tell me.
I'm good with that.
Me, too.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, invest five hundred dollars in the Christmas Kids and Cops program.
Okay.
Second.
Wait, a motion and a second. Uh, let me call the roll, please.
Borzma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item N, action approve the following changes to fund balance assignments, documents. Stacy, you want to?
I'm gonna go one at a time. So if we want to go through kind of one at a time, I have them listed all for separate action.
Do we need a motion to move forward, or?
You need a motion to approve each assignment or unassignment as they are.
Okay.
If you just kind of go down the list, and then we can discuss each as they, they come up.
Can we talk about the first one before we do the motion, in case we want to change something, so we don't have to do an amendment?
Absolutely.
That fir, that first one, that five hundred thousand dollars that was in one building fund, rather than putting it in the undersigned fund balance, I think we should put that in our detention center general fund balance. We can take it out if we need it, but we know we're going to need extra money. This was, uh, um, money set aside to work on the parking lot, and it'd be good to just put that five hundred thousand dollars back into the detention center, in my opinion.
Have we paid all the bills for the parking lot?
Yes, that's.
Any other?
We can do that. I mean, it's just.
Any other comments?
I think I just heard everybody say yes, in which case I'd make a motion to, uh, move that five hundred thousand dollars from the administration building fund to the detention center fund in the general fund.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Move the five hundred thousand from the administration building fund to the detention center fund. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two. Unassign one-point-three million from fund balance reserved by Rivers Bridge to restricted fund balance for road purposes in the Road and Bridge Fund.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Stacy, comments?
So what this does, um, this kind of prepares us. We have to unassign things to get that reassigned to, um, because we're moving it into a brand-new line. The, um, if you see in the assignments down the road, we're going to do one-point-one back for the Big Bruce Bridge. But, uh, the river bridges, um, we're just kind of reassigning these dollars, because this Bruce Bridge is actually going to start in January, that's the plan anyway. Um, and the river bridges we're currently have budget for in, uh, two thousand and twenty, in the budget, so we don't need that assigned for the river bridges any longer. That being said, if there is any bills that go unpaid at year-end for the river bridges, which, um, there will be, um, we have the money in that budget, that'll roll into fund balance. And then what we'll do next year is, um, do a supplemental budget to move it back into the twenty-one budget, so we can finish paying those bills. So that money is there, the river bridges are accounted for. Um, but this is kind of to move some money around, so that we have it now designated for the Bruce Bridge, which is scheduled to start in twenty-one.
Questions?
Do we have a rough idea how much money we still owe on the river bridges?
The last, uh, bill that we looked at, it's, it's roughly around four hundred and some thousand. I, I don't have the exact number, uh, but I can get it to you guys.
That's the last bill we paid, or we have a bill that we're paying for that?
That's what, the work that they're currently doing right now, and, and the work that they're finishing up with, that, that'll be the, that four hundred-plus thousand, the last time I looked, is what we have left to, uh, pay out of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, unassign six hundred and sixty thousand from assigned for Basin Bridge to restricted fund balance road purposes in the Road and Bridge Fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, discussion here?
This bridge was already paid for, um, a couple of years ago, and it was just, um, just kind of cleaning those dollars up and just putting them out of, just back into regular fund balance in the highway fund.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four, assign eleven thousand eight hundred from restricted fund balance road purposes to assigned fund balance, the Sinai Bridge and the Road and Bridge Fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, this.
So we've had this money about, we've had eight hundred thousand even, assigned in our fund balance for the Sinai Bridge. That's been, um, in the process of getting towards a point where we're going to bid that, and we still don't know exactly what that looks like, do we?
We're looking at January.
Okay. So we were, our, our portion was actually eight-eleven-eight is our total responsibility for that bridge. So we're going to assign another eleven-eight to get us to our full amount that we're responsible for. Um, then, next year, as this project gets bid and hopefully starts next year, um, again, similar to the Bruce Bridge, we'll supplement the, the FY twenty-one budget with these dollars and pay for the bridge.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five, assign one-point-one million from restricted fund balance road purpose to assigned fund balance, Bruce Bridge and the Road and Bridge Fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, so this is, just as I had mentioned earlier, now we're going to take one-point-one back out and, uh, sign that for the Bruce Bridge that was awarded through the, uh, Big Grant Program. And, um, if you recall, bids were open, I think, end of September, or first part of October, came in very favorable. Um, and it, our, our portion is, um, approximately one-point-one million, so this will be, uh, used then to, next year.
Is.
If the bid, the bills start coming in, then again, we'll supplement the budget and, and use these dollars then to pay for the Bruce Bridge project.
This is a fifty percent share on this?
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
On, on this, Stacy, so we moved one-point-three over, and we owe about four hundred thousand, and we're taking one-point-one of the one-point-three out. So that leaves about two hundred thousand dollars that's not covered by the money we're moving around for, um, the.
But this is all in fund balance, so the, we have it actually in the budget, which is different.
Right.
For the river bridges. So the money, the four hundred thousand for the, that, that we owe yet on the river bridges, we do have the money for, but it's budgeted, it's not in the fund balance, it's actually in the budget this year.
And that was my question. We've got enough in fund balance to.
Yes, abs, yeah, and we don't, actually don't need it in fund balance. We need it in our budget this year, and it's there. The dollars are there.
Thank you.
Yep.
No other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item O, canvas of the two thousand and twenty general election results. Action to approve the canvas of the two thousand and twenty general election. I have a motion to approve.
I think I'll present first, and then you guys can do a motion in a second, if that's okay?
Yep.
All right, let me get situated here. All right, switching gears here, from money to elections. Okay, so, we had, it's been a journey. This has been a wild ride, but it's been really fun. We had, I'm super impressed with the turnout, as I'm sure everybody else is. We had 9,255 absentee ballots cast. We had 5,480 people vote at the polls. We had 10 more people that were, they voted the emergency ballot, which is folks that were mistakenly left off the poll list. So, when they went to the polls, they, the poll worker couldn't find them in their e-poll book. And so, they would call me, and I would do a little bit more research, and so, they were mistakenly just left off. And so, they got that right to vote. So, we had 10 more of those, so making 5,490. And so, that gives you a total of 14,745 ballots casted for this election. So, that's pretty incredible. We had 19,686 registered voters. So, that gives you a 75% voter turnout for Brookings County. So, that, I think, is so impressive. I'm just, I wanna thank those folks that came out and voted. I think it's just, it's a right that we all get to exercise, and so, 75% of those folks here in Brookings County took that opportunity. So, I think that's great. And we definitely felt it, too. But, Vicky already thanked everybody, so, and I too wanna thank everybody. We had 32 poll workers, I had 30 absentee workers. I had, let's see, I had two resolution boards, but we had to create two more. And so, and then I had three temporary election workers that worked the absentee, the 45-day absentees. We were so busy, we had to hire one more. So, she helped us with that. So, it took a village, but, so 75% voter turnout. So, I think what we'll do, and Stacy and Dan, you may have to help me, this was my first thing. So, we had some provisionals in the election this year. And so, what provisional ballots are, is these are folks that insisted that they were registered to vote, but we couldn't, we couldn't find them. And so, instead of just turning them away and telling them that they can't vote, we offered them a provisional ballot. And so, they vote the ballot, and then they put it in a provisional ballot envelope. It does not get counted on election night. We have, we have to research those provisionals. And so, I have to do that in this window of time, when election stops, to when you guys canvass. I have to do my research on those provisional ballots. And so, I did that. And what we came up with is that none of them counted except for one. So, I had to get a resolution board. And so, the resolution board was created, and we, they opened up that provisional ballot. They've got a process that they go through, and so, they did that. So, I, that's what we're gonna go through right now, is that provisional ballot that was counted. And so, we'll kind of go over that. Vicky, you've got that right in front of you, okay, perfect. Now, this is what I'm not sure of, if you want me to go through it, or how? So, the resolution board, this was what they created. I don't know if you wanna go to the first page and the second page. Leanne, I'm sorry, I don't think you can see this, but I'll have this in the office, so you can come take a look at it if you'd like.
Ballots, there were?
We had 13 provisional ballots.
Thank you.
How many of those did you count, though?
One.
Just one.
And just to let you know, this was an error through the state, that it didn't get put on. We found where she had registered, but it just, for some reason, didn't get put on, so.
Yeah, she registered at the DMV, and she wasn't 18 yet when she did that. And so, when she turned 18, total vote is supposed to carry that over, you know, take her out of, she's not, you know, not 18 yet, and put her into active when she does turn 18. That didn't happen. And so, by me, or by us being allowed to research and do, and I do my research, but we, but yeah. So, I was excited that we were able to, you know, be able to count that one. Unfortunately, we couldn't, she couldn't do it the regular way at the polls, but hers will count, so. All right, and I think we'll move right into the absentee.
There's no action we have to take as a board for that?
Nope. Yep. All right, so, the majority through absentee. So, as you can see, we had 9,240 absentee ballots that were received by our office, and we took those ballots up to the absentee counting board election day morning. So, we brought up 9,240. They started going through their process, and we ended up having about, we had 23 more ballots come in later that day. So, as they were doing their process, people were still dropping off their ballots, which they can do. And so, we just hang, we hang on to those for a minute, and then we bring those up to the counting board. And so, you can see in addition, so then we've got 9,263, okay? Not, you can see that nine right there? Nine ballots were not even opened, because they, the signatures did not match. So, they verified that the signature on the back of the envelope did not match the signature on the absentee ballot application. So, those are just automatically discarded. They don't even get opened, they remain sealed. So, you deduct that. So, there was 9,254. Then, we had three more ballots get turned in a little bit later, and so, you just add those. So, they had 9,257. And then, I'm gonna show you what the tabulator said. The tabulator read 9,255. And there was one ballot in there that was completely blank. So, if you compare the two, they were within two. So, we're good to go with that. And I just wanna thank that absentee counting board, it's a lot. I mean, they had a lot of pressure right there, they had a lot of ballots to go through, but they did a good job. Can you just, I just wanted to point out something right there. That nine that were just immediately rejected because of the signatures didn't match, they automatically just, you know, so, out of all of those ballots that were gone through, only nine automatically, you know, just got rejected. So, that's like, that's not even 1% of that. So, I think that's pretty incredible, too, that all those got counted. I just wanted to point that out. All right, so we'll move right into the vote centers. We got, first up was Activity Center. These guys had a line right away in the morning. So, they had 994 ballots counted on that night. You can see that the tabulator, four as well. So, they were spot-on. Moving right into Bethel, the busiest location, always. These guys had 1,271 ballots go through. The tabulator also counted 1,271 ballots, so those guys were spot-on. This one's my Aurora location. Those guys were busy, too. They had 468 ballots go through the ballot box, and the tabulator also counted 468 ballots. So, those guys were also spot-on. And then, we got our Elkton location. Those guys had 365 ballots cast. The tabulator also counted 365 ballots, so those guys were also spot-on. This was our White location. Our White location had 477 ballots go through there, and the tabulator also counted 477 ballots. So, they were spot-on as well. I do just wanna point out, in the White location, you know, those guys, and you guys know, too, we had a, we have two hot, we have two hotspots. I got a hotspot that goes there, and then we also have like a booster, because you can't get service in that area. And so, you know, and we work off internet, you know, and so, and even her calling me, you know, if she needed help, we had a kind of a hard time with that connectivity. But, we made it, so, good job, ladies. This is our Bruce location. Those guys had 390 ballots cast there at their location, and the tabulator also counted 390 ballots. So, those guys were spot-on. This was our Valga location, this was also a busier location. And if you recall, we closed the Sinai location and the Arlington location for this year, unfortunately. So, these guys were pretty busy. They had 923 ballots cast. And you can see that the tabulator also counted 923 ballots, so they were spot-on. And then, finally, we've got Holy Life. Holy Life had 602 ballots cast there at that location, and the tabulator also counted 602. So, those guys were also spot-on. Um, I guess that's kind of what I have for the recap, for you guys to see, you know, what the poll work- that to the tabulator. You can see that we were pretty spot-on. We had two, which was in the absentee, one was blank, though. But, now, you know, if we wanna go through the results, I mean, these, we have these all hung up downstairs. They're also on the website at the Secretary of State. But, we can go through these if you want. These just go through each race. And then, we can go through the detail after, it's totally up to you guys. I don't know what-
In the past, what would be done?
I think in the past, I think for the primary, I just put it up here, and you guys just kind of looked at it for your, I mean, just to look at the numbers, look at the results for each race. And then, we have it detailed as well, that you can take a look. But, these are all on the Secretary of State's website, and we have these hung up downstairs as well. So, it's whatever you guys would like to do.
Any suggestions?
Yeah, okay, let's just walk through it. So, that was the presidential race there. This one, you can see, this is the- This is the United States Representative race.
Not giving you a lot of time to look, but if you want-
Public Utilities Commissioner, you can see those races.
When you put them on the table in the right spot, those of us that are watching on YouTube can see, and I can tell there's eight other people that are watching besides me, so.
Whoa. Can you, you can see it now, Leanne?
We can, thank you.
Okay, good. There's that race. And you can see the State Representative District Four, District Seven race. We had a little time since Brookings County was done at 9:40. We were able, it was kind of fun to be able to go and actually watch, you know, the numbers, the races, kind of go with all the other counties, that was kind of fun to watch. County Commissioner at Large Race. You got the Supreme Court retention race, or not race, excuse me.
Approval?
Yes or no? Here's your Constitutional Amendment A. Two, for those that are listening, our office did receive one phone call yesterday on where they could get their medical marijuana card. I referred them back to the state. Marty, if I'm right, you and I, I think we're kind of talking about that. And I know that our office and stuff with some of those measures, will, you know, will be getting, you know, questions and stuff. Is it July, July 1st?
Yes.
2021, that, for those that are listening, I don't know.
I'll talk more about that.
Thank you. Here, we just got the details. This is the details results, if you wanted to show, that shows how many ballots are unders. Again, these are all hung up, so anybody that's listening or watching, if you wanted a copy of it, or just wanna take a look at it a little closer, I'd be happy to give you those.
You wanna maybe explain what an overvote is and what an undervote is? Do you-
Yeah, so, the overs and the unders, and maybe just help me out a little bit, too. So, the undervotes is if you have a race, and it says to choose two. If you choose one-
Right.
-it would put you in that undervote.
Or if you leave it blank altogether.
Or if you leave it blank altogether, and thank you.
Yeah.
So, if you get an option, and you don't choose anything, or you don't choose the amount that you, the number is, then it puts you in an under, and then vice versa.
Overvote, yeah, so if it's a vote for two, and there's three candidates, and you vote for all three, that's an overvote, and it doesn't, that doesn't count. Your undervotes do count. If you just vote for one instead of two, for instance, that vote counts. But, if you overvote a race, then it throws out, it doesn't know who you really wanna vote for, so it throws it out altogether.
And like I said, we've got- Yeah, thank you. And those overvotes, that detailed, that detailed result sheet, we have in our office. So, if anybody would like a copy or an email, we can send that off to you. Other than that, that's really all I have. I just, Vicky kind of summed it all up. You know, it takes a village, and so, I appreciate, you know, Marty and his staff, and everything they did, and Dan, you know, coming to my rescue on a few things, too, just to help me out there. So, I appreciate that, and I just appreciate my entire team. I think Brookings County did a really good job with this, and I'm proud of, I'm proud of everybody, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I have an action to approve the canvas of the 2020 general election. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions, if I might. Uh, I think it was four years ago, in the 2016 election, that we had a little problem with the tabulator. Was there any problem with moving the ballots through, is our machine working well?
I forget her name, I forget what we call her. She was good to us. She was very good to us. The only, the only issue that we had with that tabulator is if the person that's jogging, and you know, they, they put the, all the ballots through a jogger, and just to kind of get the static, and the, you know, just to help with the airflow. But, there are Uakava, are Uakava voters. So, our Uakava voters are military and are overseas. But there are Uakava, are Uakava voters. So our Uakava voters are military and are overseas. If you are one of those, if you qualify for that, you're able to get your ballot emailed to you. And then you print that off, you vote your ballot and you mail it in. Well, the board up here to keep everything together, you staple it. And so if we, that, you know, so some of those sheets went through the tabulator by mistake, you know? We tried to catch them and pull them out the best that we can because those have to get recreated by the resolution board. Because that tabulator doesn't pick up pieces of papers. So that staple went through there. But really that was the only, I think, noise that I heard, you know, when they were running those through. Otherwise it went phenomenal. Tabulator was the best purchase.
So our equipment's good. We should be ready for our next election in that regard?
Yeah, it, it ran smooth. It ran smooth. I think after we got through the absentees, it maybe kicked out three or four ballots total that the resolution had, board had to look at. And it might've been a blank ballot or, you know, just some marking on it, but are folded or whatever. But I think there were three maybe through the whole entire one, except the absentees. And we know there's going to be more there because of the Uakava votes.
Can we loan that tabulator to Pennsylvania?
That would be great.
I just had to.
And then my last question is, did anybody get any feedback from Sinai or Arlington since we did not have a polling place there?
You know, I had a couple calls, those that are in that area. But I just, I, I said, you've got, you got Volga you could go to and Bruce and they were, they were fine with that. They said, okay.
Yeah, I had the same thing. I think they just wanted to make sure like if they've always voted in Sinai or Arlington, that they could go elsewhere and still vote.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor, signify. Opposed, motion carried. Commission Department Director's report.
I have. Five-year highway road bridge plan that we did our public notice and public hearing on back in September. I believe that went through the process and it was approved. So we did get notice of that. Also handed out and I'll scan this and email this to you, Leanne, so you have it as well. But I handed out this morning an executive summary. This comes from Chad Nelson, our project manager for the Detention Center Expansion Project. He provides these monthly summaries of kind of the work that's done and what's maybe coming up and things, things going on to date. So he provided you, us with that. And so that was in front of you today. Lastly, I, I know when we were kind of looking at the 2021 calendar, we talked about kind of how December looks for meetings and instead having, you know, instead of having, having that late meeting, trying to get it done a little bit earlier with the holidays. This year too, December has three meetings. I have those down, the first, the 15th and the 29th. Do you want to keep all three of those or do you want to eliminate one of those? The 15th, I will say, just doing the first and the 15th, the 15th is pretty early in the month. If something were to come up, Vicki and I might need to schedule something else if you want to just stick with those two. And then if, if needed, we could maybe schedule a special session. But I guess that's, that's kind of just a discussion item for, for you folks to, to talk. But there, the three Tuesdays every other week, you know, and we've kind of kept a meeting towards the end of the year, just for any last minute wrap up type items. But I know that that's getting, as I looked at it, that's getting really close to, and it's between the Christmas and the New Year's holidays. And I didn't know if, what, what that looked like. I didn't, haven't discussed this with Commissioner Bartley at all either. So I don't know what his schedule looks like, but. Any preliminary thoughts? Do you want to leave it as is? Are people traveling in between that, the two holidays?
Stacy, I think that we had some conversation in our last meeting and I maybe just misremembered that. Instead of having the meeting on the 15th, they have it on the 22nd so that we had more of the budget stuff in and not have the meeting between Christmas and New Year's. Would that be something people would want to talk about?
We could do that too. We could do the first and the 22nd. And then, yeah, Vicki or, well, you're not going to be here. This is Vicki's last meeting too, everybody. Makes me cry. So yeah, if we want to do that, we can make that work. The first and the 22nd, if, if that's not too close to the holiday.
Sounds good to me.
We will plan on that and move forward accordingly. Just some other upcoming dates. Next Wednesday, right in the middle of the week, we're closed for the Veterans Day holiday. We do have Vicki's retirement next Friday. The information is listed there. And then we're also closed just looking ahead even further to Thanksgiving, both at Thursday and Friday. So that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
I have one question. And I'm only asking on your report because you talked about the detention center. And this maybe would be more something that Commissioner Borisma would have an opinion on. But when I drove by the detention center this week and looked at, you know, where we're at and what's going on under all that underground stuff, should we be taking some photos that we keep in our archives? So that 20 years from now, if somebody really would like to have a bird's eye view of what's underneath the, the jail, we've got some photos of that?
We sure can. We can probably also chat with our construction partner, Henry Carlson may be very willing to share the photos that they're taking since they're providing them to us in the written reports and summaries. Most general contractors for large scale commercial projects will keep a folder of progress photos throughout the project. And we can request that folder as a part of our documentation at the conclusion of the project if, if we'd like to.
That would be great in case there's a utility issue, like I said, 20 years from now or whatever.
Sure. I think it's appropriate to ask them that question. And I'm not sure, maybe Stacy knows. I, I don't know. They had talked about doing some time lapse photography of that project as well as potential photos occasionally throughout the process. And so there may be instances where they may be willing to share some of that information with us as well. I don't know if we ever confirmed when or if that was still happening, but we talked about it at one point. I can reach out to Chad and just ask and see what they have for photos now and what their plan is moving forward. And I think, are they on that website on our, I don't know if they can just provide that to us? They, I think they might be. I haven't, I guess I haven't been pulling up to look at the photo portion of it. So usually that's where they would keep them though. Yes.
Stacy? Dan, do you have? Laws, I guess.
Sure. Law is, most of you know amendment A passed here in South Dakota. It was a fairly wide margin here in Brookings County, which legalizes use and possession of one ounce or less of marijuana for anyone over the age of 21. So the first thing I would say is that this does not apply to anyone under the age of 21. The same marijuana laws would apply beginning on July 1st to anyone under the age of, of 21. For those that are 21 or older, obviously beginning on July 1st, it'll be legal. And so part of the conversation that I'm having with defense attorneys here in town, as well as other states attorneys across the state is for those that could be arrested between now and July 1st, the defense attorneys are going to come into court and they're going to ask for a continuance and they're entitled to do that. And typically, most cases are resolved within 180 days. And so if someone's arrested for marijuana, say today, tomorrow, into the future, typically their court date's set four to six weeks out from the time of their arrest. And so now between July 1st, what is going to happen is you're going to have a pile of marijuana cases that are going to be extended out past July 1st. And then I'm going to be left with the decision on whether or not to continue to prosecute a crime that is now legal. I don't think a jury in Brookings County or in the state of South Dakota is going to retroactively convict someone for a crime that is now legal. That's my opinion. And so part of the question that we're going to have to answer, and this is kind of directed at the county commission too, is that are we going to expend taxpayer dollars for court appointed attorney fees, law enforcement resources on cases that will most likely in court result in a dismissal sometime after July 1st? So this question is, you know, being asked and we're, you know, making decisions based in light of, you know, the, the taxpayer dollars, the vote. This is kind of unprecedented in some ways to have a crime that is now being legalized, written into the constitution, but doesn't take effect until July 1st. So what do you do in this interim? Do you continue to use taxpayer dollars for court appointed attorney fees, law enforcement services on, on cases that will simply be continued in court past July 1st? And then, like I said, I think I'm a pretty good trial attorney, but I don't know if, I don't know if I'm as good of a trial attorney to convince 12 people that they should convict on a crime that has now been legalized, assuming that trial happens after July 1st. The other problem we're going to have is, so then the pushback would be, well, why wouldn't you try to complete those jury trials before July 1st? My response to that is, would you rather have a domestic violence case, a aggravated DUI case, a case involving violence go to jury trial and use taxpayer dollar resources to hold that offender accountable? In this COVID era, which there's a caution and a reluctance to have jury trials. And so the jury trials that we are having, usually there's reasons to do that in terms of putting a greater emphasis on, on violent crimes. And so it would be very difficult to justify proceeding on a jury trial between now and July 1st on a marijuana charge. So I'm trying to look at this thing pragmatically. You know, that's kind of the elephant in the room as we move forward to that July 1st deadline. Been speaking with Sheriff Stanwyck, Chief Erickson about how we're going to, you know, kind of proceed into the future as it relates to, to this new legalization for those that are 21 and older. And so part of this discussion too is my desire to continue pushing in the direction of diversion programs. Been having conversations with Brookings Behavioral about opening up diversion programs for first time nonviolent offenses as it relates to use or possession of marijuana. Because even after July 1st, we're going to have 18, 19, 20 year olds that, in my opinion, should be eligible for a diversion program as it relates to marijuana offenses. And so I'm going to continue to work very hard in developing that diversion program going into the future. But yeah, I mean, I, I think there's still some open ended conversations about what this looks like in terms of the interim period, if you will, between now and July 1st. And so we're looking at that and then, you know, obviously medical marijuana. There's a certain provision that not a lot of people are aware of in the medical marijuana. Is that if you're the 18, 19, 20 year old kid who, under the legalization, still can't possess marijuana, there's a provision in that law that says that if you're caught with marijuana, you can prove after the fact that you could have gotten a prescription. So not that you had an active prescription at the time you're in possession or use, but could you have gotten a prescription had you asked? So that's kind of a, a new wrinkle that we may encounter in marijuana cases where you might have doctors that are called to testify in these marijuana cases that this particular criminal defendant who's been charged with marijuana, is it possible that they could have gotten a prescription had they asked? So it's, it, you know, it's a very, it could be a very expensive proposition for the county to be calling doctors in to show that this person could have gotten a prescription had they asked. And so I'm looking at the county commission faces right now. So, so which, which I think supports the idea of diversion programs for those first time offenders, the 18, 19, 20 year olds. Because it's a, it's a, it's a way to hold them accountable, do it in a way that sets them up for success rather than failure, allows them to, to work towards, you know, changing their behavior and, and not necessarily having that criminal conviction on their record. But it also is a, is a big tax savings to the county as well as, you know, the state at large. And so I think that's the approach we need to take as it relates to marijuana. And I'm going to continue working in that direction in light of the passage of the law. So, any questions? No questions. Wow. All right. Yeah, that's right.
All right. I'll move on to Commissioner, Department, Commissioner Reports and Discussion Affairs.
Okay. On October 20th, the Public Affairs Committee sponsored the County Commissioner Forum, which I listened to online and everybody did a great job. The narrator did a good job. It was very interesting. On October 21st, I attended the Focus 2020 put on by First Bank and Trust, which focused on leadership, building a team and getting your people motivated. On October 22nd, I had a introductory meeting with Andrew Sloss, the new BEDC director and had an opportunity to get to know him a little bit and look forward to working with him in the future. On October 22nd, the District Seven Legislative Forum was put on by the Public Affairs Committee. On October 26th, I attended our drainage meeting. And at the drainage meeting, we had a number of different entities come in and just help educate us on some issues. So Kent Johnson came from Banner's Associates to talk about drainage in Brookings County specifically. Jason Peterson came from the Kingsbury County Drainage Project. He's with CDI, the engineer for that project. And Kingsbury County did a large scale revamp of a drainage ditch that made some significant difference between a couple of lakes in, in Kingsbury County. And we also had Jeff Vanderwilt, who called in from NRCS to talk about the state conservation programs and something somewhat a little bit about easements. And then Jay Gilbertson talked about the East Dakota Water Development District Drainage and Watershed Districts and how they work. And we're just moving forward with our, trying to find a solution to the drainage problems that we're having in Brookings County. We'll be meeting again in, in December and Richard might have something to add to that. I'm not sure, but he was at that meeting too. On October 28th, I attended the BEDC meeting. On November 1st, I serve on the City Planning and Zoning Commission. And the commission approved three TIF related actions at that meeting that might have some, that will have some impact on, on the county. One of those is, there already was a TIF in place out at the Research Park. And we approved an amendment and it has to go to the city council yet, that would allow that TIF to go from, instead of the 15 years that it was written for, it will go for the 20 years, which is the max allowed by statute. And then approved that a change to the TIF allowing for some additional water sanitary sewers, storm sewer detention and, and some street improvements. So all of that, I think you'll be seeing more of. The second TIF was to, a TIF at the Svennis Industrial Park to extend the street network between 24th Street and to do some storm sewer improvements. And again, that got, got approved. improvements. And again, that got, got approved. And it includes drainage improvements in 32nd Avenue, and along that area that we've been doing, we have done some work on in the past. The third one was a TIF in town over by kind of where McClemmons Pond is in that new area. I'm sorry, I don't have the actual development area. I think it's between 15th, 15th Street South and 7th Avenue South, where the city's going to put in some low-income housing-type units. And then there will be some other developments. There was a TIF that was approved by the Planning Commission for that project. And that would be my report. Other than that, I did, I was with the rest of you for department head evaluations on Tuesday of this week. Thank you.
Commissioner Borzma.
October 20th, I participated in leading a leadership Brookings session related to kind of governance of things, and just talked about leadership with that group. Always fun group of people to hang out with. On the 28th, I also got a chance to meet with BEDC's new director, Andrew Sloss. On the 30th, I got to come into the county offices and judge our Halloween decorations contest, which was fabulous. And of course, as in years past, equalization crushed it. I don't know if anybody else was down there, but full-on Pirates of the Caribbean theme with the soundtrack and the whole nine yards. So it was a pretty incredible effort by those ladies. And Jacob just gets to take credit for it and pass on the credit, please. But yeah, those ladies do an incredible job. In walking around for that little decoration challenge, I suggested that perhaps we festively decorate for the Christmas holidays as well. So the challenge has been extended to the department heads in each of those offices. And I will happily come around and judge again for Christmas. As a part of that, I mentioned it to the commissioners this last week, but you'll see in the newsletter that the Equalization Office is a kind of point of contact on our countywide collections for Project Joy. And since we didn't participate in any parades this year, typically the commissioners each throw in 20 bucks as a part of our candy donations to the kids of Brookings. Instead, this year, I've challenged the commissioners to join me in throwing in 20 bucks for Project Joy, so that we would participate alongside our employees for that as well. So that's, that's that. Paid up check, Commissioner Krugman. And then on Tuesday, the Commission Department had reviews and Election Day, which went off so smoothly. So thanks to the staff for taking care of that as well. That's my report.
All right. I took part in the Commission House, the Commissioners of Brookings. That was really easy to do. Went well. Appreciated the chamber for putting that on. And the moderator did do a really good job there. So that was good. The 21st, Commissioner Jensen and myself met with Dustin at the OAC to discuss future planning for fees and fee structures and different stuff like that moving forward for next year. Then on the 26th, I did have, we did have a BCOAC meeting out there, and everything's going well. Lot of, lot of use of the, of the facility over the last few months here, especially in the archery side. Then also that evening, I had Brookings Health Zoom meeting, which nobody was, usually they have three or four people that will go to the hospital boardroom. But we did strictly Zoom that day. And so they're, you know, keeping track of COVID. It's not been good, great for them up there. And they're doing everything they can to try to take care of all the sick that are coming in from COVID. At that time, they had mischanges daily, these numbers that over 80% of their people in the hospital were due because of COVID. And so those numbers change quickly. So, but he gave us an update on that. And then on the 28th, I had a beta meeting. And again, they're working with their cares money to see how that's going to last and how that's going to go for them. And, and their ridership definitely is down, but they're doing everything they can to try to increase that and be safe while they're giving rides. On the 30th, I did have a meeting with Andrew, also the new BEDC director, and met with him. And then on the 3rd, we'd had the department head interviews. So that's, that's my report. I just want to say thank you to Jenna and Vicki. Fantastic. All those numbers come in perfect. It's, it's really cool. And to be able to get in and get out and get everything downloaded, did a great job. So thank you very much.
Okay. On the 21st, with Dustin out there, with Commissioner Krugman and myself. On the 26th, the BCOAC Advisory Board meeting, like I said, it's going well out there. Even during the, the COVID era here, it's, their numbers are looking good. On the 27th, I was invited to a township meeting. I attended it. They kind of wanted some background on their Calvert grant program with the site they have and potentially bring it forward to us. But I did that. And on the 3rd, we did the department head evaluations. And otherwise, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Krugman and Bartley on their reelection to the commission and be gone next Friday. And like to congratulate Vicki on her years of service. So with that, is there any more?
There is no exec session.
May I say one more thing?
Sure.
I was going to say this during my report and I forgot. I'm sorry. I'm not there today because my mother-in-law has tested positive for COVID. I'm on 14 days quarantine. I won't be at our next meeting. And we'll attend on, online again. And the same thing with the Joint Powers meeting, that's coming up next week. I'll, I'll attend that online as opposed to in person. And because of that, I'm going to miss your going away reception, Vicki. And I too would like to extend my thanks for all the help you've given me while I've been a county commissioner and the hard work that, that you've done in the last 19 years for Brookings County. Thank you.
Being there's no executive session, I look for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Return.